Well, considering we never evaluated our board goals from last year for the ones that we talked about. We could put them in place again, which basically the first board goal is to be more collaborative. And the second uh goal is to be able to prove that we are more collaborative and working together. For the betterment of the school. If we had a a complete copy of it, we could look at it and decide if that's what we want to do.
Those, to me those sound like goals for the Board of Education, not goals for the superintendent.
Well.
They're, to me, I question the measurability of those items for the superintendent.
That part I agree with, but they are supposed to be our goals. But they do need to be measurable so we can evaluate whether or not made progress or whatever in attaining the goals. They they need to be measurable. But they need to be our goals that we want either him to do or the school to reach. That we can measure him on progress.
Mr. Ellison, what underneath that revised statute, what's your guideline supposed to be for evaluating teachers? How many times are they to be evaluated in a year?
Uh, the times you have to, you have to have one mid-year, has to happen. And then a final, especially if you have to uh, if you believe there's an issue.
Do you have an action plan?
Correct, yeah.
So.
Which I currently have any teachers on.
So a measurable goal would be, you know, successfully completing a teacher evaluation.
Can we give them goals or reset the date?
I agree. I would prefer to set a date.
Okay, let's set a date.
Then we can each come up with something. Then we can discuss it and come up with a set of board goals that we feel are measurable. I think we can set a separate meeting so we can compare before. We used to do some of that stuff on a Saturday morning or something. So if we're looking for a time we can make at least enough of us to come up with something we can agree on.
Well, this Saturday I'm out of town and next Saturday is my anniversary, so it'd have to be six or seven in the morning so I don't get hung by the way. By the way, I'm back home, proceed to bed.
We really don't want to see you hanging somewhere, so. That's what we need is a date.
I'm I'm willing to next Saturday morning, but it'd have to be early.
It doesn't have to be in June or close to, it could be July first, which would be, I believe, two.
Tuesday.
Whenever people can make it, because if we don't have at least most of us there, we can't make any progress. Ideally, we would all be able to make it.
I have to make it July first.
I can make July first.
You can do that.
What time do we wanna do? Seven thirty, six thirty?
Let's do. Seven thirty or eight works for me.
It doesn't, what shouldn't have to take us a long time. If we become prepared with some ideas and we can agree, it shouldn't have to take an hour, hour and a half or more.
July first, seven thirty?
Better do July first, seven thirty.
PM?
PM. Okay, okay. Yeah, someone might expect to see what's seven thirty AM.
Not the time and the day.
July first, seven thirty. We'll have to get that posted. Since we're all gonna be here and discuss something.
Yeah.
Okay. At least we've got that much now. I guess we can move on to go ahead and fourteen new business. Item A, consider payment of monthly general fund bills. So move.
Support.
Move by Jake, support by Brent. Anybody have any questions on any individual hurdles? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed to no? Motion to pass seven zero. Item B is considered the L four oh twenty-nine, which was the truth and taxation hearing item. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Most present have been to approve the levying of the millages for the Walden area school for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year with voted operating non-homestead at eighteen point zero zero, zero zero mills. Uh, building and site sinking fund at point nine seven eight four mills. And the voted debt millage at two point nine seven, zero zero mills.
You said four eight or eight four?
Eight four. I said four eight, I meant point nine seven eight four.
I figured you did, but clarify.
Point nine seven eight four.
I'll support.
Okay, Matt, support?
Correct.
Anybody got any questions? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed to no? Does this have to be roll call or?
No.
All right, well, then it passes seven zero. Item C, consider approving the amended twenty-four, twenty-five general fund budget resolution.
We'll go through.
Support.
Move by Brent, support by Matt. This is twenty-four, twenty-five. Anybody have any questions before we go? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed to no?
No.
Motion will carry six one. Item D, consider approving the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget resolution. This is a vote budget for next year.
Move to approve twenty-five, twenty-six budget resolution.
I'll support for questioning. For discussion, I ask.
Move by Brent, support by Matt. Any questions or comments before we move?
Just an additional comment. Um, a reminder that at our, in our pocket at our last board meeting, we also did receive at that time a draft copy of the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget. We have had a draft copy of the budget since our last school board meeting.
It it has changed, I understand.
There are some changes, but we, but it's, it's a superintendent's responsibility to present the budget and we haven't.
Okay.
The school board as a body wants to make those amendments, we can amend something. As the school bu- board.
We were also told in the finance meeting when that was handed to us, that there were many changes still to come and there really wasn't much use to look at that.
Because of the state budget.
I'm letting you know, we were told there wasn't much use to look at that.
Well, and again.
So there wasn't much use to even ask questions on it at the last finance meeting. You're telling us that we've had it. I'm just letting you know what we were told.
We don't. We don't, we don't need to sit and argue about it. I asked you to have a discussion on the budget resolution.
And I would say today, even what we're passing will need to be amended in October, November. Once the state of Michigan passes the school aid budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year for the state of Michigan.
Yeah.
Until that happens, we're at the craps table in Vegas with this budget.
I usually had a different way of ex- of explaining it, but I've always tried to explain it. A budget is a wild guess based on the best information you can come up with. This is the best we've got now. It will change because it is a guess. Only a well-informed guess, but it's still a guess because the state, as Brett said, can do anything they want, anytime they want. So, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget resolution? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed to no?
No.
Will carry six one. It's really hard to see. April four, Iowa's going to eight twenty-five. Item E, consider approving the amended twenty-four, twenty-five food services cafeteria funding budget resolution. It's part of the budget fact.
Move to approve the amended twenty-four, twenty-five food service budget.
Support. That sounded like Jake.
Correct.
Move by Brent, support by Jake. Now, it's there. Anybody have any specific questions considering this one?
So our first one that we got had way different numbers than the new one that we got at six o'clock. So my question is, does anybody tell me why those numbers changed that drastically?
The the food service budget?
Yeah, we went from the estimated fund balance. It was forty-two, um, forty-two thousand five hundred and forty-six. It went down to thirty-seven, one hundred and fifty. And like, all the numbers are different, but I don't know why it changed significantly from two o'clock in the afternoon that day to six o'clock by the evening.
We're working on that with the accountant to accurate if like the number we're, we're looking at. We can't be adjusted to be more fine.
We hear that on the wire.
They were working on the final numbers with uh, August?
With the accountant, yes.
With the accountant to get more accurate numbers and they changed from what they had first had them at.
We we get more accurate numbers at the end of the year, the June thirtieth is our end, so we have to get as accurate as we can. That's why we go five o'clock.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed to no?
No.
Motion will carry six one. Item F, considering approving the twenty-five, twenty-six food services fund budget resolution.
Move to approve. Support.
I've got Brent and Jake again.
Correct.
Any questions on the twenty-five, twenty-six cafeteria budget? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed to no?
No.
Motion will carry six one. Consider, item G, consider approving the twenty-five, twenty-six sinking fund budget.
Move to approve. Twenty-five, twenty-six sinking fund budget as presented.
Support.
Support.
I've got Matt on this one, support.
Yep.
I have a question.
Uh, we don't need, because. We don't need to amend the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, so didn't, didn't, didn't we, didn't have changes? Okay. It just stood out that we didn't have the original, okay. Any other questions on the sinking fund budget? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed to no?
No.
Motion will pass six one. Consider approving the twenty-five, twenty-six debt fund budget.
Move to approve twenty-five, twenty-six bond debt budget resolution as presented.
Support.
Support.
Move by Brent, support by Matt. Any individual questions on the budget? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed to no?
No.
Motion will carry six one. Item I, consider approving the twenty-five, twenty-six activity fund budget.
Move to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six activity fund budget as presented.
Move by Brent, is there support?
Support, yeah.
Yeah, support by Jake. Any questions on the activity fund budget? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed to no?
No.
Motion will carry six one. Okay. Get to move on to the difference that we've got in Jake. Consider the MHSAA twenty-five, twenty-six membership renewal.
Support.
Move by Joe, support by Matt. Any questions on this one?
Um, the governing body name, is that me? Am I more inside this? Like somewhere inside this?
No, no, you're outside this. The governing body name would be Walden area schools.
Gotcha.
Are the Walden area school Board of Education the governing body? And then it's signed by the board secretary or their president.
Somewhere it may, there's probably an amount.
Is there a amount we have to pay MHSAA names?
No. No, we just gotta send it in. I don't think we've ever sent it in a month.
Okay. Well, it's been moved by Joe, support by Matt, to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six membership renewal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed to no?
No.
Which one is that, Brent? No, pass six one. Item K. Okay. Consider the, approve the twenty-five, twenty-six director of operations, John Burke contract.
Has everybody met with you, Sean, and seen their contract and agreed to it before we approve these?
I have that, that.
You have the other one?
Yep, the only one that's a little different is the way it's, because it's gonna depend on district community passing, but I just, it looks a little different. And Jen, I have a note with Jen.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say every one, sorry. That's, yeah, nice.
Jen, yeah, I have that.
Okay. Everybody's seen it, no one agrees to, to read through? They're gonna.
Right. Dan said to me, I would watch, yes.
Okay, alright. I move to approve John Burke's.
Support. Move on to Joe or.
Joe.
Joe in Virginia.
Joe. Made the motion, it was a bit of a tie for the support and go with Virginia. Any questions or comments before we move on?
I have one question. In the legal appearance part, it says, on everybody's contract except for a few, it says this will be handled on a case-by-case basis according to the district policy, but that is not included on Jones. I did not know if that should be there. And so it is not. There's all numerous other ones, but there's only a couple that are missing in that line.
Yeah, we have attempted to make them similar, so I, I would refer to add it if it's not all of the others.
What line is this one?
This will be handled on a case-by-case basis according to the district policy. It's on minority of them, there's only a couple that are missing it.
Number one, number one?
It goes on, legal number two, H two.
Okay.
Yes, it's missing on our genomes and on Jones, and everybody else's has it.
It might seem like they all get the same.
Much closer, they were drastically different than their first article, but we're trying to make sense. So I would prefer to update that.
If you wanna make them all the same, John Burke's has under leave days for eight. He has D and E, which are holidays and vacation time.
Yeah.
I'm not sure who gets vacation and who doesn't, but.
He's in year round, so his is a little different.
Okay, it's not listed on anybody else's, so I just bring it to your attention right now so I don't know.
I appreciate, I do appreciate that. He's, he's the only one on those contracts that is worth your while.
Okay.
Well, how do we wanna handle that line in that motion and support on the four?
I would, I would much rather be stricken from the other ones because to me it's uh, it's, it's arbitrary and capricious when you say you gotta handle it on a case-by-case basis. And then spell some things out.
So you're saying instead of adding, taking.
Instead of adding, it should be stricken.
Okay.
Which means the motion that you have would be correct. You could add the.
Or that one.
Yeah, that one would be correct. It would not need to change.
And I'm gonna guess that that, that that language, without that, that'll be handled on a case-by-case basis, is similar to the language that's in our collective bargaining, bargaining agreement with our teachers. That is.
I've never heard. Uh, I think it can be because the budget bargaining agreement over there. It's, well, all of the teachers the same.
Right, and.
Was it that under, what's that?
It's, it's for if somebody's subpoenaed to, to court to testify that their subpoenas were by a competent court, then we pay the difference between what the court pays them for witness and what their normal pay would be.
It's under, under legal affairs. We can't handle the teachers on an individual basis for what we feel.
Yeah.
Well, if that's all of the questions, I have Joe in Virginia moving to approve John Burke's contract. All in favor, signify by a thing aye.
Aye.
Opposed and no? Motion will carry seven two. Consider approving twenty-five, twenty-six business office manager contract.
Move to approve.
Support.
Brent, Matt. Now that through the motion on the floor, you can ask your question.
Okay. Um, are we approving her to have sixty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, which is typed out? Or are we approving current C is the sixty thousand five hundred?
It, yeah, that's the, it's the sixty-seven. Sorry about that, I'll update that.
I see. Seventy-seven five hundred.
Well, the budget says the sixty-eight.
Does it?
Yep.
Sixty-eight even, or sixty-five?
No, sixty-five.
Sixty-eight five?
No, I'm perfectly fine if it's the sixty-seven thou- I'm just letting you all know, our budget says something else.
Is that answered by, yes, I believe, so I looked at the number that was typed. I didn't review it.
My next question is on number four. Well, it's number five, I guess, where it talks about sick days. Everybody else's says that it does not complete a full year, its paid leave shall be reduced based on the portion of the school year, and hers does not. So I don't know.
Is that hardship? Yeah, I didn't make sure. Like, if she didn't work the full year, she can't, she doesn't actually get one, I guess.
Right, right.
So that's number five, I correct?
Yes. And she is the only one that gets short-term disability insurance and life insurance.
You believe that was something she negotiated when she first started, but that wasn't the person that I believe that was in chat.
I haven't done it yet, so I'm just asking.
Is it, yeah?
And we are paying for her college courses.
Does it say in a month?
No, it says the board agrees to reimburse the administrator for successful completion of academic courses up to three six college courses.
What, under three?
Under nine.
Okay, but it's a specific number?
Up to three college courses.
It says up to three six college.
The, and the front six needs to be updated correctly, but it is three college courses.
Three college courses.
Annually.
You said it's under that, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we type three and then six?
I'm not sure.
Well, my other question is on thirteen. It says that at least ninety days, and I don't know, this could be right, but I don't know how this works. At least ninety days prior to the termination, but then down below it talks about the same thing, saying sixty days for the termination. So I don't know if one's supposed to be different than the other.
That says sixty nine days.
I read it, I think it says the same thing, but it's different numbers.
Sixty is the accurate days, yes. Well, I would say twenty, twenty-two.
Well, it's been changed to one time, but it's still a lot of.
Oh, I see what it is, because it's saying that you have to give ninety days notice that you're considering it, sixty days that you're not gonna renew. That's, that's really what now is bad.
Yeah.
I know this one was uh, written by a lawyer, so. I believe that went through the lawyer when they did that initial contract. Because, yeah, so it, it's, it does, that makes us confusing, but I do believe that's what it's supposed to be written, now that I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Because it's ninety days, I told him, let him know that you're looking into it, sixty, you have to give a letter, but it knows.
Okay, I read it, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, for sure, that was interesting.
What are we doing about the other line?
It's, it's not on this contract.
The line added.
So number five needs that line added, right, to say that the sick days are reduced if they leave for the year. And number nine, parentheses has to be corrected to three. For the, it would be.
Yeah.
Trying to think of the word, it would, it would have to be a word that's reduced by, like, given off your two hundred and twenty day employee, you divide it out on a head to board. For what can we do that, that would work too?
You're talking the sick leave days?
Yes.
Can't do that. With the.
We don't load them up front?
No, you, because of the um, Earn Sick Time Act that we passed.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that was adopted by the legislature and then changed and changed again in January this year. Um, she's gonna hit that thirteen hour or thirteen days, and she's gonna, in two hundred and twenty days, and you can't.
No, I think it's saying if she would leave early, then she wouldn't get the full thirteen. That's all I'm saying, I wouldn't say she wouldn't get it, she wouldn't get the full thirteen if she left before the two hundred and twenty days. Pro rated, right?
Yeah. That is in our teacher's contract as well.
Yeah, I, I would think, yeah, because, because it is front loaded, then they get prorated if they leave early. Depending on the number of days they work, so if they left exactly fifty ways, fifty percent of the way, then they end up with half of that.
Mrs. Motion is for a table though.
Yep.
And which, which dollar number are we going with?
Sixty-seven.
Yeah, it sounded like budget wise, it was sixty-five, is that correct?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it was right, we were, like, I said.
You are correct, yes, because I, I was looking at, when I was looking at the contracts, I looked at the type number, which was what, sixty-seven?
Sixty-eight five.
The type number, sixty-five?
Type numbers is sixty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so the type numbers when I was going by, but, oh, the type number does say sixty thousand, the type, uh, like the written out number.
Oh, no, the written out number is sixty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty.
Yes, it's actually the type one that I was looking at.
It's sixty, sorry.
Well, which one are we using? On a check, you would use the number that was written out in longhand. It would take less than the number. Which one are we using here? Seem like we wanna agree on that before we vote.
What was her current contract, Sean?
Well, the initial was sixty-five.
No, 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 the current.
The, the current one was, it was piecemeal, because it was part of the year. So I, no, I don't remember the exact figure, okay.
What was, what was pieced together part of the year?
For the, when she kinda went virtual for a little bit, that piece where she was still one of part of the business, it was another part.
But you paid her the same amount of time, didn't you?
No, she dropped out, she dropped out at the end of the time.
She was budgeted at sixty thousand for last year, Brent, that's what her starting budget was. So I would assume that's what we, we assumed she was gonna be.
I guess it's looking at this as the, her original contract must have been sixty-seven five. The part that's typed in there.
Sixty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so I assume that would have been her original amount.
Well, for approving a contract, which one, which number do we want to use?
Sixty-eight five.
You good with that, Matt?
I'm fine with that.
You, you provided support. So we're going sixty-eight five when we vote.
I spoke the time of the budget, correct?
Yeah, what Joe was that? So. All in favor of approving business office manager twenty-five, twenty-six contract at sixty-eight five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed and no? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Item N, consider approving twenty-five, twenty-six central office administrative assistant contract. So. This one will need that line stricken on number two?
Yes.
Number, yeah.
Number. The one we're talking about, case by case basis, but. Yeah, that's, yes.
I see it.
Can you leave the remaining ones at the end?
Oh, yeah, that's number two. So we're striking, so this will be handed on a case by case basis. Is that okay with the motion?
Yeah.
Who made, who made the motion, Brent?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, Matt, okay.
Support.
And Virginia is supporting.
So one question. Everybody has leave days of thirteen annual leave days, she has fifteen.
She, um, she works a little longer than the others.
Any other questions? Okay. Moved by Matt, supported by Virginia. Approve central office administrative assistant contract, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and no? Motion carries seven zero. Item N, consider approving the twenty-twenty-five student support advisor contract.
I move to approve the student support advisor contract. Support.
Move by Virginia, support by Jake.
Sean has to have that line taken out. Let's say handle it case by case. It's under me, second dot. And my other question is, she's the only one that has underpaid leave time. When an employee resigns, unused paid leave time will be paid at half of the currency. But she's the only one that has that under contract?
Being that others have, she's been here longer. Um, so it's been in there. Um, so you're saying that the others don't have that in there at all? So yeah, so I mean, I, I can say it's been hers, but she's been here longer than the other ones who worked at, other than John, I guess.
Nobody has it under.
Say that again, what don't they have?
Underpaid leave time, it says when an employee resigns, unused paid leave time will be paid at half of the current hourly rate.
That's in what are, it'd be underneath John Burke's contract.
Yeah, because it should be, after ten years, they get full, correct?
Did I miss it? Sorry? Oh, this, I apologize, that was my bad.
Yeah, well, in.
I'm sorry.
I would love to make all performance exactly the same, but each one's a hair different, um.
Well, I'll try to go through it, but.
No, I.
Sorry.
No, I, I appreciate you looking at it.
That was my fault.
Have a question. Have we received any guidance from legal counsel on this contract? Mr. President?
We've received some. They're not definite one way or another, they told Sean to go ahead and list it, to be approved. Because we don't know when investigation will be done. And I was told that it wouldn't have to be added. But it can go either way, is what he told me.
And if this is approved, the employee will still remain on administrative pay, please?
Well, that, this wouldn't change any of that. This would just be the next year's work contract. It wouldn't affect the investigation any. I don't believe, not me, the attorney. But they, do either way, we can all figure it out all. Right now, we have a motion for.
Is tabling to the investigation's completed option, or?
Well, uh.
Is it an option to table it until the investigation's concluded, or?
Well, right now, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, but.
It would require a, probably a table and motion.
Is that a legal?
Yes.
Recommendation then?
Not a legal recommendation from me, because I'm not the attorney. He said we could do either way, it wouldn't affect, is it, if things go wrong, we can still do that well, if things go right? Or depending on which way, depending on how things go, this wouldn't affect it either way. This, the investigation would still determine what we decide to go to do. This is just whether we're offering the contract now or not.
I would move to table.
I'll support that.
The move by Brent, support by Matt, to table the student support advisors contract. Pending the results of the investigation. Any discussion?
Point of order, Mr. President, the motion to table is non-debatable.
Okay. Okay, move by Brent, support of Matt, to table. All in favor, signify by a thing aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed and no?
I'm at staying.
Okay.
I'd like to request that the individual will both be recorded in the mass.
So it doesn't really much matter, because I can't really hear one side or the other a big difference. So I'm about to ask for a voice vote, and if I'm correct, you have to say it at all. Brent?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Mindy?
No.
Virginia?
No.
Well, I'm gonna vote not to table, I'm just gonna vote to decide when it's done. So it'll be three to three, we can't decide. Motion can't be tabled to two. Lack of votes. That would take us back to the original motion, move by Virginia, support by Jake. Any other discussion?
Have a problem offering a contract to somebody that's currently on paid administrative leave. Until that investigation's done and we get that report back from the legal counsel, I cannot support this contract at this time.
Any further comments? If not, we can vote. Just guessing how it'll turn out. Might as well start with Virginia?
Yes.
Mindy? Jake?
No.
Matt?
No.
Brent?
No.
And if Dick says yes, it's still three to three, and we can't decide any of it.
Motion fails, Mr. President.
Motion fails, with too lack of votes.
This motion fails.
Motion fails. That would be the best way to do it, fails.
You do a typo.
You do typos. Okay. Item O, confirm approving the twenty five twenty six food service director, in all favor, contract.
Oh, Bill, pro. Mark.
Move by Brent, support by Matt. Does this one need the line taken out?
I believe so, I think it was all of them except for this.
Yeah, I forgot.
You said the different hours was for bus driving?
It's a different, yes. And, um, for hers, like it shows, she's able to work, uh, seven hours, so she would be working eight to three if she was, um, doing the bus route. And if she decides not to do the bus route, she would be paid on the, uh.
So once you pay, from the bus, you have to get paid the, the rate that we pay the bus driver for, and that.
Yeah, she gets a separate contract from the bus, and you just, that also depends on the hours she comes with you.
Yeah, I would say that's, like, that would be a separate contract.
The bus partners, yeah. That, that just affects this contract, deciding.
I didn't get the bus, ma'am.
Yeah, we got a bus contract, yeah, no, that, that comes closer to when we're actually gonna do that, it's like when the teachers get theirs.
You're nodding like, yeah, that's how we do it.
That's not working.
That's, that'll just be late again.
And because I believe that would also still be subject to any inflation that we would apply to that rate on that, so. That is probably still being negotiated between the, the, and generally we apply that, what we, what the teachers get, is generally than what we've applied to that.
You guys didn't vote that up on our contract, you brought, right, you brought that up, but you guys didn't vote on that.
What was that?
He said that whatever the teachers got, the raised teachers got, the support staff did too.
Yeah, you voted.
And you guys didn't vote for that, when it was brought up.
Did you vote against it, or did it not vote?
Uh, I don't remember if it was voted against, but it did go past.
Okay.
If you'd like it to now, you can do that.
We have another motion on the floor.
That would be one of your, the former board members amendments.
Not on this one.
Okay. Okay, this would be, gotta, I've gotta strike this, at least I know what we're voting on. Move by Brent, support by Matt. Approve the food service director's contract.
And this is with, this is with the case by case, striking off, correct?
All in favor? Yeah, that's, that's, that one taken off, same as the others, every one of us had that taken out, other than you didn't have.
Yes, just making sure.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed to no? Did you, what did you say, Brent?
Aye.
Oh, okay, I thought you heard, okay, so pass is seven zero. Okay. Item A, consider appro, P, item P, consider approving the twenty five twenty six athletic director contract.
Oh, to approve.
Support. Move by Brent, support by Jake. Does that have the?
No, cause it's, that's.
No, this is a entirely different contract.
He doesn't get a lot in that with that contract.
No, he's a teacher's, a teacher's supplementary.
He doesn't.
This is.
Okay.
And, and this is the, for the athletic director duties, he is paid as a third party employee to help the staff, but I do wanna take John's interview to thank Mr. Granger for all the hard work he puts in. Many of the sporting events you go to, whether it's home or away, he is there at them, and very seldom do we see athletic directors, even from other schools, make that effort to travel to the Barstool Sports with you, so, thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Okay, well, any other discussion, kind of? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed to no? Motion carries seven zero. Item Q, consider approving the twenty five twenty six athletic handle. Do we have any more facts?
Yeah, yeah.
Right here, fight. Okay.
I would move to approve with the changes that indicated in the red sync. I'm, I'm for, I'm for changes in red.
Pretty much everything's the same as, as last year, nothing's really changed.
I'm looking at you, like someone on your choice of red. One red. I'll take your word, brother.
There's one line at the bottom of page one, short holder, there's two, four lines at the bottom of page two.
Another one?
Yes.
I can see it well.
Well, the one versus ineligible status, I can see that. That one must be really very.
Well, it's bolded as well.
Yeah, okay, cause otherwise. Uh, we're, we're still passing what's written, whether it's red or not.
Yeah.
Joe, when we did our policy piece, and we talked about travel, did you need to change that in here? When we, cause it says all athle, all athletic, sorry, all athletes shall travel to athletic events by school transportation, but we don't. Some of our kids drive too. Do we have to do anything with that?
Says a lit work, I would, this rule may be issued by a culture, a request by the athlete's parents.
So we're good with everything?
Should be.
Okay.
That's gotta be clear for me.
Okay, I know we had to talk about policies, we had to talk about traveling, and we talked about them dragging themselves, so I wanna make sure it was what we needed to do.
I don't have any approval for the motion. Brent made the motion, move.
Or.
Okay, Virginia's wanna.
Let's see, Jake, Jake actually had that, I had, but we change it to Virginia, or?
Jake supported it, but.
If, if Jake supported it, I would put Jake. I just did not catch that with whatever else came up. So the move by Brent, support by Jake, sorry. Any other questions or comments, like athletic handling? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed to no? No. Motion will pass this one. Item fifteen, items for discussion, anymore remembering that item, I think we should discuss that.
Yes, when it comes to the bullying of that kid that we talked about last, um, month, um, we don't need to name any names or anything, but with what happened to him in the bathroom stall. Um, did the kid that poured water on him have any discipline?
There, there was an investigation, yes, there was some discipline applied, yes.
What, what discipline did you?
Um, I have to go back, look at my notes, he had in school suspension.
Okay, I had heard that, um, he was in class every day, so would he be in class every day if he had in school suspension?
He was actually down in my office, um, and the teacher still had to fly in work.
Right, so he definitely had in school suspension?
Yep, half a day, I believe it was.
A half a day?
It was, correct, yes.
A half a day for pouring water on a kid while he was in the bathroom?
Well, it turned into a half a day, because when I did the investigation, it started in the, in the morning, and he was down there, so it did technically turn into suspension till later that day, he was in my office most of the day, but.
I don't know, I guess I would have, uh, maybe given him in school suspension the next day, so we get ahead of the full day, or, but you're, you're the boss, but.
Well, it's just more of the, all of the facts were, um, provable, I had something provable that I could actually, um, pack up.
Did all the transcripts get mailed by June fifth, because I had a student that said that she did get hers, and she, uh, on June twelfth was gonna go to the office and pick it up. You know, all of them were mailed by fifth?
I believe they were. You, you got them all mailed for her?
I mailed them out, it was later than June fifth, I have to go.
Um, just a couple of questions, Sean, when was our kindergarten roundup, was that in April?
Uh, it was in April, correct, yes.
So, what was that?
I think it was April nineteenth.
April nineteenth, and I know all the schools in the county hold their kindergarten roundup about the same time.
Yep, yep, you are correct, it's usually like towards the end of March, the, um, middle, end of April, it's usually in that area, it's usually on one day.
And I know we. And I know, um, I know we publicize that to the best of our ability, you know, and.
We use all the methods we have at school, absolutely, yep.
And last year, when did we get approval for the Great Start?
It was gradually ready for the beginning of the year before we got that final approval.
To, to operate the Great Start collaborative, so.
Yeah.
So.
And I'm correct, it was, it was, I mean, it was in the sixteen, not the eighteen.
It was like me, so, I know, but I know we had that on our Facebook and on our website, that, that that was going on, and, and again, as far as the, um. Daycare that we, or the.
The GSRP was later because it was a startup for you, so you had to make sure that everything was in place.
GSRP, right. We had to get that final approval from the state to do it, so.
Yep. Yep.
So apologize that we didn't have that for them, but just starting that program last fall, you know, it took us a little longer to do that, but I do know that.
But it took me calling for you guys to start kindergarten roundup, is the problem.
Yeah, you guys said that you're not doing it.
It took me calling, it took Nicole Barnhart to reach out to my sister-in-law to get me the information.
I don't, I don't wanna stop everything and make anyone unhappy. This is.
Items for the board.
Not public comment, this is item for discussion by board members, and you're not a board member.
So proceed.
Anybody else?
I would move to adjourn. Simple.
That was Matt.
Correct.
This one's also non-debatable, non-admissible. And what is the, nine seventeen?
Eighteen.
I'm not buying eighteen.
Move by Brent, support by Matt, for your nine eighteen. PM, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed to no? Motion carries seven zero.